Good evening, everyone. I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting of February 8th to order. Thank you very much for all of you being here. There's only one item that's of any substance that's on our agenda tonight, so please be aware that Bella Vista will occupy our full agenda. We do have housekeeping items that we need to take care of first, so we'd ask you to be patient for that. And when it comes time for the Bella Vista project, everyone that wants to speak, aside from the applicant who first starts, gets three minutes. But since there are so many of you, please be conscious of what your fellow citizen says at the podium and decide whether or not you need to repeat it, or you want to say something different. Because that way, everyone can be heard, and we really want to hear what everyone has to say. And please be courteous, and I know you will, and respectful when everyone gets to the podium, and please talk to the microphone, and wait for questions if there's any questions. And I think that we'll have a really productive meeting if we follow those rules. So I thank you for that in advance. And the first thing we have to do is do the roll call. Ms. Bailey?
Commissioner Sayak?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Here.
Commissioner Talisfor?
Here.
Vice Chair Erickson?
Here.
Chair Jensen?
Here.
And Commissioner Bourgeois has an excused absence since he needs to recuse himself from the first item on the agenda.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. And will you all please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible) Under the United States of America, and in this republic, religious stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, indivisible in its essence.
And I failed to mention, if any of you have electronic devices, if you would please silence them or put them on vibrate, because they do tend to be a distraction, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is the approval of minutes from January 25 of 2012. Has everyone had a chance to review them? And if you have, is there a motion on the minutes?
So moved?
Commissioner Sayak moves approval of the minutes. Second?
I'll second those as well.
Seconded by Commissioner Talisfor. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. The next item is written communications. We have one desk item on Bella Vista tonight, which consists of several letters regarding the packet. Please let Vice Chair Erickson, who will be Chair for Bella Vista, know if you need additional time to review that item before we get to it. We don't have any requested continuances tonight. Are there any subcommittee reports? And just to explain to the audience, all members of the commission also serve on other subcommittees, general plan, historical preservation, and we try to review those so that everyone can be up to date on those. So no meetings occurred this past week. And Commissioners, I am going to take the end of the calendar out of order while I'm here, just to get it out of the way, to do new other business. So is there a report from the Planning Director?
No, there's not.
And is there any commission matter that anyone wants to raise at this time? Seeing nothing, those are taken care of. So having completed my first fabulous stint as chair in three minutes...
Wow.
Oh, I do get to do one more thing before I leave. There is time on our agenda. We have three minutes that we set aside for each meeting, for anyone that wants to address the commission on anything that is not on the agenda. So if you're here to talk about Bella Vista, this would not be the time to do it. If you're here that you want to address us on something else, you're welcome to do that, and you have three minutes to do so. Okay, seeing no one...
(inaudible)
Yes, ma'am? On something that's not Bella Vista? Okay. Would you introduce yourself? And if you haven't already filled out one of these yellow cards, if you do that, tell us who you are, and you have three minutes.
My name is Heather Dolcello, and I live on Marchmont Drive. And I'm here to speak about the proposed expansion of Hillbrook School from 315 to 414 students. The head of school recently invited neighbors within a short distance of the school to a meeting at Hillbrook. I naively thought it was to discuss possible solutions, as I was aware they were considering applying for an increase to the conditional use permit, or CUP. However, it was simply a meeting where the head of school told us what would be happening, almost as if it had already been approved. He was not open to suggestions that were given by the audience, and it appeared from my perspective to be a check-the-box exercise. I expected a more reasonable approach and to at least broach the topic of compromise, but no such discussions took place. I left the meeting feeling as though the neighbors were being viewed as insignificant factors in this process. The current plan in place creates a win-lose approach, with Hillbrook gaining significantly and the neighbors losing. I was hoping for something more collaborative. I am opposed to this expansion for many reasons, but most importantly, because of the safety issue this proposal would present to the children in our community. I believe the benefit to Hillbrook School should not outweigh the detriment this would result in for Los Catos residents. I also believe that the current CUP is already extending the bounds of what is safe, and any increase would push beyond the limits of what should be deemed reasonable. Last summer, when Hillbrook had a summer school program that enrolled a significant number of students and increased traffic to an unmanageable level, I started to notice there was a much larger problem. I believe last summer was a snapshot of what we will experience if Hillbrook is allowed to continue its path of being disrespectful and disregarding the obligation they have to the neighbors on Marchmont and the surrounding areas. Currently, Hillbrook is significantly impacting our access to the road already. In the mornings, there is a constant stream of traffic in both directions, and our streets do not have sidewalks. It often gets to the point where it is difficult to back out of your own driveway to take your kids to school. The integrity of the school is also called into question when the school is well aware it made promises on record about a decade ago that it would not seek to expand. The response has been a "that was then" approach, but this should be more deeply considered when, from the neighborhood perspective, it was a good-faith effort of the neighbors to work with Hillbrook at that time. This increase, if approved, would have a significant negative impact on the community. The neighborhood simply does not have the resources to accommodate this type of change. At what point do we set the limit? There is an increasing need to establish that enough is enough. Thank you very much for your consideration and time.
Thank you. And I'm just wanting to confirm when that item is actually on our agenda.
I know the application-
And it's not yet. It was, had been continued to February 22nd? And that wasn't?
No.
Okay.
They just filed their application last week, and it's going through the planning, just starting to go through the planning review process.
Okay, so please, obviously you're following it, so please be aware of when the notice comes out, or when the actual meeting on that will occur. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
Anyone else who wants to talk about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Okay, seeing no one. I am required to recuse myself from this item because I live within 500 feet of the proposed application on Bella Vista Avenue, so I cannot take part. I leave you in the capable hands of Vice Chair Charles Erickson, who will guide you through this process. And thank you very much for your attendance tonight.
The next item on our agenda is architectural site applications, S0646, S0664, lot line adjustment application, M0609, variance application, V11001, and negative declarations, ND0802 and ND0803. Before we ask for the staff report, show of hands, everyone has visited the property? And are there any other disclosures that have not already been made by other members of the commission at this point in time? We would, I would remind you, if we will proceed with a staff report, then the applicant will have five minutes, up to five minutes. We would invite all members of the public then to, that are interested in speaking on the topic, to speak. If you have not already filled out a speaker's card, we would ask you to do that. In the meantime, take it to my left and the audience right. And I would appreciate it if you do that. If there are phonetic cues that you can give me about pronouncing your name, that would be terrific, and so forth. And then the applicant would have at his or her discretion an opportunity for three minutes for rebuttal. That's how we'll proceed. And as Chair Jensen said, we would appreciate everyone staying to the topic and doing that in a respectful way, as we try to conduct all meetings. Ms. Bailey, do we have a staff report?
Yes, Ms. Davis will be doing that.
Okay, the project site is located on the west side of Bella Vista, just north of Charles Street. The zoning on the property is R18. The properties are in the hillside area, and such are subject to the hillside development standards and guidelines, with two exceptions that I wanted to explain. One, we did not apply the maximum allowable floor area allowed by the hillside development standards and guidelines, because the R1 floor area ratio is more restrictive. And the property has the R1 zoning, so we applied the more restrictive of the two floor area calcs. The other is that there are criteria in the hillside development standards and guidelines to allow an excess of floor area above what's allowed. We did not apply that criteria. There is a code section, 2940-075, Section 3, Subsection C, that includes findings for granting a floor area increase. And so that was the applicable section of the town code, not the hillside development standards and guidelines. The two lots are 6,049 square feet and 4,106 square feet. And this is with a proposed lot line adjustment that would adjust that common boundary between the two parcels. They are non-conforming lots, because they are smaller than 8,000 square feet. Their applications include architecture and site, applications for the two new homes that are being proposed, a lot line adjustment to shift that property line between the two, and a variance for a reduced driveway length on-site. The driveway issue, we need a driveway on these properties, because they are required to have two parking spaces. If they don't have a garage or a carport, we still need to have two parking spaces. So the driveway is an essential element. Parking is not allowed to be in the front setback or in the public right-of-way. So we need to, at a minimum, have a parking pad on the site for two cars, and that would necessitate a driveway. The driveway would connect from the existing edge of pavement to the face of garage. That length is adequate to meet our code requirement, requesting a minimum of 18 feet. However, it's not entirely on the property, and that is why a variance is required, because the entire 18-foot length of the driveway will not be on the actual property site. The applicant is requesting a number of exceptions. The side-in-front setbacks for one of the homes, the one at 341, the front and rear at 339 are short of what is required by code. Reduced setbacks can be considered. There is a provision in the code that allows that for a non-conforming lot. The commission does need to determine that it's appropriate for the neighborhood and compatible with the neighborhood. The applicant is also requesting an increase in the FAR, and exceptions to hillside development standards and guidelines for cut and fill depths. And because we don't really have any LRDA on this property, because the entire site is 30-plus percent slope, there's not really any LRDA to build within. The commission considered these applications in October, and at that time, continued the matter to January of 2012, providing direction to the applicant for some desired plan changes. The project was continued to this agenda to allow additional time for staff review of plans and information that was submitted in late December. The directives provided by the commission in October included looking at the driveway location because of safety concerns. There was some concern expressed about the variance being requested. The applicant was asked to justify the need for the exceptions that are being requested, and to significantly reduce the size of the homes, and reduce the massing of the rear elevation. The commission's options this evening are to either continue for redesign, if you'd like to see additional changes beyond what has already been proposed, to deny, or to approve the application. Two notes, if you do ask for a redesign, the applicant would need to waive the permit streamlining requirement for action on the project by March 15. And we'd also like to know that the applicant's willing to make further plan changes, if that's your pleasure to continue the item. That concludes staff's report, and if you have any questions, be happy to try to answer them. I also have an engineer present if there's any engineering-related questions.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Sayak?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. I have three. Should I start with all three? Okay. The first is clarification to Ms. Davis on, you had mentioned that the floor area ratio, we did not use hillside development standards and guidelines, and instead the R1. And you also mentioned that because we're using R1, we would follow different exceptions to the maximum floor area ratio?
There's provisions in the town code for exceeding the FAR, and so we applied those, there's findings for that, and that's what we applied to this project.
Okay. Doing my background for this, I was looking at hillside development standards and guidelines, so could you just quickly, how lengthy is it? Can you give me what those exceptions are?
I'd have to pull out the town code to do that, and I can do that when I'm done answering questions. I can grab the code and read the provision to you.
Okay. The second question I had with, is with regard to the lot line. I know at the last meeting, we had several discussions about this. And in one of our written communications on Exhibit 13, is town of Los Catos information on lot line adjustment guides. And one specifically bullet point states that lot size remains conforming to the existing zoning ordinance. If the lots are currently non-conforming as to size, which these two lots are, they cannot become more non-conforming. And in parentheses, it says smaller. So can you clarify how these two lots meet that bullet point?
I believe the town attorney addressed this at the previous meeting. Those lots are non-conforming, and I don't believe there's anything in the subdivision map act that says they can't be made a different size. So I-
So, Ms. Prop, again, could you reiterate it again for me? Because now that I actually have this in front of me. We're going to make a non-conforming lot smaller, and I understand, and I've read that, but given that we have actual documentation that says that we can't... And again, this is Exhibit 13? Oh, I'm sorry, it's Exhibit 13 of one of the... Okay. So this is Exhibit 18, letter from Patrick Tillman, 25 pages, and one of his exhibits is Exhibit 13. And again, if you need more time for that, that's fine.
Just give us a few minutes to find the exhibit you're referring to. I can give you the findings for the floor area increase. It says the deciding body may allow an FAR in excess of the FAR derived by the formula, which is preceding this in the code, if it makes the following findings. The design theme, sense of scale, exterior materials, and details of the proposed project are consistent with provisions of any applicable landmark and historic preservation overlay zone, of which we have none here. Any applicable specific plan, there is none in this case, and the adopted residential development standards, which are residential design guidelines that the town has, and in this case, we're applying the hillside development standards and guidelines. And then the second finding is that the lot coverage standards and FAR of the proposed project is compatible with the development on surrounding lots. So that is the criteria for considering an FAR increase.
Thank you.
Do you have, Commissioner O'Donnell, you have a question in the meantime, while they're trying to sort that?
Yeah, I have just, I think, a simple question. In fact, when you indicated that the driveway was the proper, would be the proper length, but that a portion of the driveway would not be on the property owner's property, how much of it is not on the applicant's property?
Oh, that exhibit that's up on the wall, that shows it shaded, and you can see the dark line running through it is the property line, so maybe a quarter of it's on the property, and the rest is off.
Quarter is on the property?
I'm just approximating. Yes, you can see it right there behind Commissioner Erickson.
So the part that isn't on the applicant's property is on the town's property?
It's within the right-of-way. And every driveway has to connect from the property line to the edge of pavement. In this case, it's just a big segment of it is actually in the right-of-way and not on the site. Now typically, the garage would still be pushed back further, regardless of where the edge of pavement is. You usually would have at least 18 feet on the site. That's what we try to achieve. In this case, if we push the driveway down the hill, it means more grading, higher walls. And it also pushes that massing closer to the townhomes below. So it was, in this case, more desirable to have the driveway up close to the street, or if it's going to be a carport or a parking pad, to have that up closer to the street. There's also, because of the slope, you don't want to have a driveway that's too steep, because then that gets really impractical to maneuver in and out of a garage or into parking areas.
Thank you.
Other questions, Commissioner Talisfor?
Just to follow up with the garage, but a garage is not necessary or mandated. I mean, you could have, you just need the two parking places.
Right, you're correct. The code requires two parking spaces. It does not require a garage or carport.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions at this time? If the other Commissioners are okay with this, we would, will proceed with the public hearing, and let, give the staff time to clarify the issue after the public hearing is closed, if that's acceptable, particularly to Commissioner Sayak. So we will move to the public hearing now. We'll start with the applicant, who will have the five minutes to address the commission, and then we will proceed on with other members of the public who have been interested in talking on this topic. So we invite the applicant up at this time. Please identify yourself for the record with your address.
My name is Dan Ross. I live at 188 Villa Avenue, just down the street. I put this first schematic up front here. This is our original plan, as it relates to our direction that we received from town staff when we began this process. We modeled this home after 145 Bella Vista, which is the most recently built home on the downslope of Bella Vista. Larry Cannon, the town consulting architect, gave a favorable support of this home, of both these homes, with the exception that the homes were too close together with five-foot setbacks, eliminating the oak tree in the middle. He commended that the homes were large, but fit in with the neighborhood. He did not suggest reducing the size of the homes, rather to landscape between houses to buffer this view. Rather than to pursue approval at this point, we reduced width of each home by eight feet. This created 31 feet distance between the houses, and saved the middle oak tree. Our next item is the driveway length. We did a survey of the driveways to see that seven out of the 10 homes- Rather than to pursue approval at this point, we reduced width of each home by eight feet. This created 31 feet distance between the houses, and saved the middle oak tree. Our next item is the driveway length. We did a survey of the driveways to see that seven out of the 10 homes on the downslope of Bella Vista are closer to the street, also have the public right-of-way challenge. The garages in the homes are closer to the street than our proposal. Another part of that question that came up at our last meeting was, that related to the driveway, was the visibility and traffic safety. Our engineer commented that moving the driveway around isn't really going to change that issue too much. He commented that the lot to the north is overgrown. If it were to be trimmed at eye level, it would improve safety. He also commented on our own lots, because our lots haven't been tended to in years, that if that was trimmed back at eye level, it would improve safety. Our next point is reducing the size of homes. We've removed the right rear corner of 339 Bella Vista. It was the area behind the garage measuring 20 feet wide by six feet deep. Half this area was internal stairwell, and half was external covered balcony for the bedroom under the garage. Removing this area reduced the square footage and pushed the stairwell under the garage. We've left the bedroom bump outs, which block direct view to the townhomes, and still allows natural light to enter the rooms. Regarding the rear height of the rooms, on your plan, you'll see that we've done a better job of dimensioning the heights, which the floor plate of the lower level to the ceiling plate of the upper level is about 21 feet 6 inches. This is same for the garage, from the floor plate of the room under the garage to the ceiling plate of the garage. From that point, the roof angles away from the townhomes below. We have not changed 341 Bella Vista. It provides comparison between the old plan and the new plan. We would be happy to reduce 341. Our intention is to reduce it if it is the preference of the Commission. We just wanted to be able to offer some contrast there of what we had before and what we have now. This is not a significant reduction. Our first reduction was significant. From our plan that modeled 145 Bella Vista, a larger plan that was supported by Larry This shows how our homes relate to the homes on Bella Vista, and we are in the range of the other homes on Bella Vista in terms of home size, the lot coverage. We've created 31 feet of separation from our first reduction, greater separation than most of the homes on Bella Vista and Maggie Court. Our new plan now has two bedrooms. It fits the range of the homes on the west side of Bella Vista, and as far, has less floor-to-area ratio and lot coverage than the townhomes below. We would be willing to move 339 away from the townhomes closer to the oak tree. It would mean eliminating the oak tree. Not our preference, but it would increase the rear setback and create more distance between the home and townhome. We would like input from neighbors and Commission. Regarding the setbacks, the town staff has supported our setbacks. Regarding neighborhood meetings, we had a meeting in 2008 and 2010. The neighbors have not been willing to meet since then. In summary, this plan is comparable to the homes on the west side of Bella Vista, and has smaller floor, FAR and lot coverage than the townhome below, townhomes below. We have block direct views to the townhomes. We're asking for one variance. I'd also like to ask, well, we asked for approval tonight. And I would like to ask out of a sense of fairness, that any speaker please state, or the commissioners please ask, if a speaker has met with me, and if they've reviewed the old and new plans, and if they could please state the square footage of their home, their garage, and their lot. If the speakers from the townhomes below, their square footage is most likely 1,650 square feet, plus a 500-square-foot garage on a 1,300-square-foot lot, many with a driveway variance and reduced setbacks. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. There are questions from the Commission at this moment. Commissioner Sayoc.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. One of the issues, have you had a chance to review the staff report?
Yes.
Okay. So one of the issues in there is with the reduction in floor area ratio. And significant reduction, that's subjective interpretation. So I'd like to hear your thoughts on the reduction that you did made, why you believe those are significant, and meet the intent of the direction that we provided at the last meeting.
We, we felt from our last meeting that there were some items that were lost in translation, and in hindsight, our plans probably could have been dimensioned a little better. And I'm hopefully, I'm hoping, hoping that you have seen the difference between that dimensioning in the old plan and the new plan. Our, our original plan at 145 Bella Vista was narrowed by eight feet, and took about 400 square feet out of that original plan. We didn't receive any guidance from town staff at that point that we needed to do anything more. We took initiative on our own to do that. We did have neighbor input at that point, and we had a sense that the homes were too big, considering that we had townhomes below us, and 145 Bella Vista did not have townhomes below them. So we took that upon ourselves to make that reduction. It's also the notion of this footprint, we basically have a 900-square-foot footprint on the main level, and we have a garage pad. So then the next question is, is how do we best utilize that area underneath, in a way that still blocks the views to the neighbors, and provides for a livable home? And during our escrow period, and during our planning period, while meeting with the town planners, the town engineers, the point was made to us that we do have the ability to create a home that's livable by today's standards, for a family. And at no point did the town staff change their mind, or tell us otherwise, in regards to that point. And it's part of the issue I'm having with this process is, it almost seems like this should occur at the beginning, rather than to allow this much time and effort to get us to go by, to get us to this point. Because there seems to be, the information we get from the planning department, and then the information that we get here is vastly different.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Just for your edification before I ask the question, we're the planning commission, we are not the staff. We don't always agree with the staff. The town council doesn't always agree with us, they don't always agree with the staff. So I think everybody knows that, and if anybody doesn't know that, they should. That having been said, we told you at our meeting last, and this was after you'd made your voluntary reductions, that we wanted significant reductions. And I understand your answer to be, you chose to ignore that, because you felt you already did it. Is that fair to say?
Well, my question back to you is, and that I hear repeatedly on this panel...
You don't want a question back to me, I want an answer.
Would be, you say you can't make suggestions of what that means. So...
Could I have an answer to the question?
We did not make, I, I don't know, we're having a hard time defining significant, to still end up with a home that is livable.
No, you're not having a trouble defining significant, you're having trouble making a home the size you want it. Isn't that what you're having trouble with? You have trouble defining the word significant, is that your problem?
Well, we don't know where we would take it from, at this point.
Thank you.
Other questions from the Commission, Mr. Ross, at this time?
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the conclusion of the, you'll have an opportunity to rebut. The first speaker that we would call is Ian McCray.
Hello, Ian McCray, 350 Bella Vista. We were here in October, I believe, and I was, I was mystified at the process at that point, and how we, how the applicant could have been that far off of what the quote "rules" were. I was pleased to hear the chair, who's now recused herself, speak about following the rules tonight. I think that would be a great idea. But what's also happened in the interim is that I had occasion, on behalf of another client, to go to the planning commission and ask, and ask for some guidance and perspective on a floor area ratio on another property in town, this one being a conforming lot, virtually level. And the lady at the planning department was very helpful in helping me do the 10th grade algebra to help me figure out what the actual maximum floor area ratio would be on that particular lot. And after she calculated it for me, she made a point of telling me, you know, the maximum is not assured or guaranteed, and I just want to be sure that you understand that. Now, I'm pretty sure, having dealt with the planning department here for 30-odd years, that they're pretty consistent in, in telling applicants what the rules are. And I'm, I'm kind of baffled that we're actually having even a, another go-around with this applicant. Either he's not hearing them, them being the planning department, or the, or the Commission, or he's totally disregarding the rules and the guidance that he's being given. The fact of the matter is that if he actually brought plans in to build 785-square-foot homes on these lots, we probably wouldn't need variances, setback adjustments, lot line adjustments, or trees cut down, and we'd have the kind of housing stock that the town says they need to accommodate more affordable stock in town. And I would just ask the Commission to hold firm with the application of a level playing field and the rules that currently exist. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCray. Any questions from the Commission? The next speaker, Forrest Strait.
Forrest Strait, 146 Maggie. Let me first explain, I know and think numbers more than anything else. I have two and a half graduate degrees from Stanford in civil engineering, construction management, and MBA. And as you can imagine, I are an engineer, and I can think better in numbers than I can in written paragraphs. So in numbers, let me, let me start with, with 341. The slope is 51 degrees. The top, elevation 112.5. My patio below, my front door, is at 50. The difference is 62 and a half feet, and that's six-story office building. In a distance between us, I'm looking up at a six-story building. Maybe we can take a look at the library next door, put your back to the front door, walk 12, 13 steps away, look up, triple the size of that building, and that's, that's what you're looking at for my patio. Or put yourself on top of a six-story building. I could take you to one, we could stand on the edge of the building, you look down and look at a person 12 steps away from the building. That's, that's just unacceptable. That's why we have Hillside Standards, that's why it's 700 square foot. We said it last month, two months ago, whatever, whatever it was. Square footage. My experience with architects, they're more artists than they really are mathematicians. I had, I went down to the city, I looked at the plans, two old ones, one new one. And I'm really surprised that before it gets to this venue, that the city hasn't really looked at the plans and calculated the square footage. I calculated it on three of the plans, and found that the square footage was anywhere between 100 to 200 square foot, under-reported or undermarked. In other words, if, if the plan says 2,600 square foot, it's really 27 or 2,800 square foot. Probably a moot point, because it's supposed to be 700 square foot. But I would hope that the city would look at the plans, if it says 700 on a drawing, make sure it's not 900 on a drawing before it gets to this venue. Being a engineer, you can imagine, I'm not a tree hugger, I'm not anti-development. But the rules are, it says 700 square foot, let's make it 700 square foot. Let's not cut down a dozen oak trees that three of us, arm to arm, or hand to hand, couldn't put our arms around. It just doesn't make sense. Do you have any questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Strait. Question from the Commission, Commissioner Smith.
I think I asked you this last time, but just to refresh my memory, in what year did you buy your townhouse?
We think it was late eight or nine years ago.
And at that time, when you talked about the hillside with your broker or your agent, was there any discussion about what was going to be built right behind you and up?
At the time, my realtor is Ian McCray. We talked to the neighbor next door, they went through a planning process with a different developer, and it was denied at that time, and that's why I bought the house.
Thank you.
Other questions, Mr. Strait? Next speaker, Tim Coughlin.
My name's Tim Coughlin. I'm at 320 Bella Vista Avenue, directly across from the subject property. I have a couple of points that I didn't make last time, this might be refreshing. First of all, I don't like to see the use of 145 Bella Vista as a precedent. It really is an aberration. The, the garage was there from eternity, and when that property was developed and they attached a house to it, they left the garage where it was. That garage would not have been approved 10 years ago, 15 years ago, or 20 years ago. It's been there for 80 years, or 100 years. So that makes that section of the street very, very narrow, and, and actually difficult, I think unsafe if you tried to get a fire truck through there at certain times of the day. So I don't think that should be looked at as a precedent. Number two, in all deference to Mr. Ross, I think we also had expectations for that property across the street when we moved in. And we kind of looked at that. At the time, there was one home down there in the, in the basin, this was 1975. And that home was the center of that whole property. They owned all of it, all the way up to the street. In fact, before that, our house had a section of the lot. If you look at the old plans, people had the foresight then to own eight feet of frontage on the other side of the street, to protect their view. Well, we didn't have that eight feet when we moved into our house, but we had the expectation that the hillside zone would protect us from large development. In fact, when we first moved in, that was, the whole area was zoned RM, I think it was 512. And through the neighborhood process, and through the general plan process, we helped to prevail on council members at the time to approve the general plan for 1,800. So we were conscious of the possibility that there could be some density increase across the street, and we, we worked hard to try to avoid that. So, but this is something that I think somehow Mr. Ross got misled perhaps, or misunderstood what was possible on that lot. But we certainly felt that we were protected because of the zoning from, from large development. Thirdly, I did, I did look at the plans, both before and after, and I did receive an invitation to talk to the developer, but I didn't see any point, because it didn't look like a significant reduction in the size. Questions?
Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Coughlin? Thank you. Next speaker, Pat Tillman.
My name is Pat Tillman. I live at 150 Maggie Court. And there were two letters I sent over. Someone's already talked about one. There's January 17th, I hope you've all read it. I put a lot of time into it, and there's a supplement that I see as marked. I will try not to repeat those things. I would like to answer some of the questions that you posed. Starting with the FAR, there was a comment made that there was an exception made to the FAR, and they used the more stringent this and that. In my January 17 letter, if you go to page 11, I itemized six of the nine items that you need to satisfy to exceed the FAR. That's under the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. It sounds to me like somebody is trying to shift the standard on over to R1 manner, a R, an R1 manner of avoiding the FAR. And if you could look at Exhibit, not Exhibit, but Section D of the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, it's called applicability and approval process, you'll see that the R1 is included in the Hillside Standards, and they are to be used. So the more restrictive waiver should be the one on, in the Hillside Standards. There are nine items, you have to meet them to exceed the FAR, not whatever it is you said they were. And I haven't looked them up, but they don't sound very difficult to beat. They, they are when you go to the hillside. The other one is the lot line change. I provided, I, I'm sorry, I don't, I, it's on your internet site, but I can't, I can't tell you where it comes from. The government code makes reference to the local rules on moving a lot line, and our local rules say no. So it's no. The next question you had, that I wrote down, had to do with these, this driveway area. There is a, a map, and I think I made reference to that, too. It's A1. There is a swatch of land, about 18 feet wide, that runs, and it gets wider as you go south... There is a swatch of land about 18 feet wide that runs and it gets wider as you go south. And it is, starts off about 80% of the proposed front yard and driveway of 339 Bella Vista, and then that drops down, though it gets bigger, to about 50% of their entire front yard. That is all town property. So most of his front yard is on town property. And my comment in my letter is, are we giving him that? And I, I don't think it's fair to be giving him town property to do all the things that I itemized in my other letter. Next. Amazing how fast three minutes goes. The town report, I think, is an awful lot of narrative that masks an awful lot of baseline facts that were not provided you, and I think you deserve better, and I think we do too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Questions for Mr. Tillman this time? Thank you. The next speaker, Mary Ann Lown.
Hi, my name is Mary Ann Lown, I live at 156 Maggie Court. My husband and I moved there five years ago, and we selected this home because of the location and the privacy. We had looked for a long time. And if you stand on Bella Vista and you look down right now, today, into our homes, it is private, you can't look into our homes. And I never was told or didn't believe anything could be built up there because I saw the property, and it looked like it's just this little narrow ledge, so I didn't know, and that may be naive of me, but when I saw the story poles go up, I was so surprised, I thought maybe somebody was building a treehouse for their kids or something. But then I found out two giant homes were going up there, and then that was when I worked with my, our neighbors here to do what we could to research this and to find out what was going on. And the main points that are being made and continue to be made and impact me and my family and my neighbors are that the privacy that we will lose from what will happen and what will be above us, that no one who, that I know of that lives in this area supports this. And, and so we oppose it, the ones that live around it are impacted to it. I did go to the meetings with Dan Ross, and I think we were cordial to him, and he did ask us, what do you want me to do? And in every case, we responded, we said, stay within the guidelines, build the home that is, is, that you are allowed to build there. But the amount of variances and his lack of willingness to follow the law and stay within the guidelines, you know, I, I just wonder why he keeps feeling encouraged to go on with this. So I ask that you deny this application, and for the reasons that I give, too many variances, not to mention the street safety on Bella Vista, the environmental impact to the trees, the oak trees, our privacy, and so many other reasons.
Thank you, Ms. Lown. Questions for Ms. Lown? Next speaker is William Schweickert.
My name is William Schweickert, and I live at 144 Maggie Court. I am opposed against these revised blueprints for many of the reasons that the previous speakers have indicated, specifically square lot and the size. I don't understand why there are so many variances and concessions being made. I know they haven't been approved, but it just seems like an awful lot to me. And, you know, for the record, you know, the property is not really fit for development. And if it were, we wouldn't need so many concessions and variances. I feel, as a long-term resident, that the town is overdeveloped and has really become overdeveloped. And this is evidenced by narrow parking lots, a lot of homes being built very close together. We're just out of space. Our infrastructure is saturated, and I feel in many, many regards that the quality of life here has been diminished. We're clearly out of space. And when I think about this project, I think, and I don't mean to be rude to Mr. Ross, but it's about money. And Mr. Ross has a right to make money, but at the end of the day, the Maggie Court residents and the Bella Vista residents are going to have to deal with this mess. And I call it a mess because these homes are really not, they're not scaled to this, to this lot, this lot does not really lends itself to development. So we, as the residents, are going to have to deal with the, the safety problems, the traffic problems, the, the drainage problems, the hillside problems in terms of what we see. From Maggie Court, we're going to see what I think is a prison. And by that I mean, homes with balconies, mostly wall with some, with some windows. And the beauty is really in the front. So in the back, we got to look at this huge structure, which isn't, which isn't very appealing. So you, as Commissioners, you have the power and the responsibility to preserve the quality of life of Los Gatos. And I'm asking you, as a town resident, to please enforce these guidelines. And specifically guidelines like the Tree Protection Ordinance 2114, the Hillside Standard Guidelines, the Design Guidelines. I don't understand why the R4, or the R1 has been in, been moved, but anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. Questions for Mr. Schweickert? The next speaker is Lee Quintana.
I just have a few things to say, in no particular order. They're just my thoughts, I was not planning to speak tonight, but I think that some of the information that was presented by the developer is a little bit misleading. He stated that, his engineers stated that the driveway was in as good a place as it could be, and that the vegetation on surrounding lots was part of the problem, that it needed to be trimmed back, and that would make it safer. I don't think the issue is whether it is safer, but whether it meets the town's site distance guidelines for safe backing out of a driveway, and no specific information has been given on that. Another thing that was in the staff report, it mentioned that there had been exceptions granted to other sites on Bella Vista, but it didn't, staff didn't give any specific examples of what homes, what, what the exceptions were, whether there was any other example of a house that had been given as many exceptions, et cetera. As far as the LRDA goes, the fact that there is no land on the site that's less than 30% is, to me, a really compelling argument that there should be no exception for the FAR because the lot is even steeper than, there's no land, that isn't, I think that what is the average, about 60% on the, on the, on the lots? That's very steep. And lastly, I don't remember the code citation, but under non-conforming lots, the code says that a single-family house is permitted on a non-conforming lot if an ANS application is approved. To me, that means that you don't have to approve an ANS application, a lot may in fact be unbuildable.
Thank you, Ms. Quintana. Any questions? The next speaker is Ken Lown.
Good evening, my name's Ken Lown, I live at 156 Maggie Court.
Can we get you to speak into the?
Is that better? Okay. I live at 156 Maggie Court. I really only have one comment to add because most of the issues have been addressed either by the Commission themselves or by the various neighbors, but one of the things I was surprised about recently was that one of the solutions to the safety concern of the driveway was for Bella Vista to accommodate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lown. Any questions? Thank you. Next speaker would be Vitaly Stolsky.
Hello, my name is Vitaly Stolsky, I live at 152 Maggie Court, right down the hill from the proposed properties. I work as a computer, in a computer industry dealing with mostly complex software systems, and one similarity that struck me with this project and, and what I do professionally is extremely complex set of circumstances that are all interconnected. The project is inherently difficult site to build, 50-degree slope, 50% slope, narrow street, small non-conforming parcels. On top of that, the applicant decided to pursue own goals that I cannot quantify or understand, citing livability of the house. The decision to make the house significantly exceeding FAR directly impacts our privacy, influences setback, safety, and many other aspects. The, the project is compared to one set of properties to grant one set of exceptions, and then it's compared to completely other set of property to grant other set of exceptions. When those things are piling up, it's, it's kind of unacceptable, in my opinion. Even comparing, comparing a single aspect like FAR to the property down the Bella Vista Avenue, different other factors are emitted like slope, proximity to other residences which are none down the hill from the property that this project is compared to. Usually houses built for hundreds of more years, and in my opinion, that something that may happen in this time will happen, and this house, if built, will face major earthquakes, will face major storms and, and other things, and because I cannot see any comparable houses built of this size built in Los Gatos, I think that in this case, the best thing that can be done is following guidelines and rules to the letter that exists and enacted in the, in the town. So I kindly ask the Commission to enforce these rules and guidelines, which we took into account when we purchased the house in the first place. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Stolsky? The next speaker is Mary Badami.
Oh, I'm short. Mary Badami, 150 Maggie Court. The staff report is inaccurate regarding project data. The parcel sizes are incorrect for the addresses. This was also pointed out at the last hearing. The omission of the Hillside Standards and Guidelines underscores its relevance to this project. Town code does not allocate FAR based on definition of a livable home by today's standards. I could not find the definition anywhere, so I did a little research, thus my exhibit. Within a half-mile radius of Bella Vista, there are 23 homes with less than 1,000 square feet, and this is only on the east side of Bella Vista. The west side is a baseball field, a freeway, the Los Gatos Lodge. Are these homes vacant because they're unlivable? No. Are these residents living in substandard conditions in Los Gatos? No. Can Mr. Ross follow the FAR and create a livable home? Yes. Staff report indicates a five-foot front setback for 339 Bella Vista, a violation of Code Section 29.40.060. The exhibit for Mr. Ross illustrates a 25-foot distance from street to the face of the home. Included is square footage from the public right-of-way. It's steeply sloped. Was it measured horizontally? Has Public Works confirmed the setback information? Staff made a general statement that in the Bella Vista neighborhood, setback reductions have been granted in the past. Staff should provide specific information on the size of the front, side, and rear setbacks for homes on the west side. How many homes on the west side were built on lots with average slopes of 50 degrees? How many homes on the west side have a residence directly below them? What we get from staff is that the new residences will be compatible with the neighborhood with the proposed setbacks. There are no homes consistent with this setting. There are unique impacts associated with this development. You cannot rely on numbers alone or creative methodology to grant so many special privileges. This project should be denied. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Badami? Commissioners, tell us for.
Can you tell me where your, you're on Maggie Court, are you in one of the condos?
Yes.
Is that correct? And so what, what would be the impact to you specifically?
It's huge. I mean, I'm looking-
Just, you know, just give me-
Okay, I'm looking at a prison. I'm looking at a prison.
No, that doesn't help me. Is it privacy? What is the issue for you?
Privacy, lack of sunlight, we have row housing, we don't even have windows on the sides of our major living areas, family room, master bedroom. Our only source of light or, or access to the sun is through windows that are going to be shaded by this, what appears to be a six-story-high building because of the slope difference.
Okay, thank you. So if I understand, it's privacy and lack of sunlight, it'll be altered?
Yes, and also noise that will be emitted and nighttime illumination from glare from the people living in there. You've got a density and an intensity issue, and you've got homes that are squeezed in like a Lego chip. It's a pit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Next speaker is Erin Johnson.
Good evening, my name is Erin Johnson, and I live at 150 Maggie Court. This applicant continues to be defiant of the general plan, the neighborhood, and the instructions given at the last meeting. Laws are important, they are not subjective, and they equalize the playing field. Anything short of not applying the law on a consistent basis is cause for discrimination or implies favoritism. I was not at all nervous to speak at the last hearing on this project until the moment I set foot into the room. There were so many people. Of course, there were my neighbors whom I expected to be in attendance, but there was also a legion of others who were just there to fill the chamber. I'm still unclear if any of them actually had knowledge of the details of this project, but it was clear that they liked Dan Ross. Now, perhaps if it was a statue of Dan Ross being erected in our backyard, these people would have served a more appropriate purpose, but alas, this is not the case. This is not a student council election, and we are not holding a rally. It's irrelevant that Dan Ross is a nice, cool guy. It's irrelevant that Dan Ross is a rock star and he's active with his church, or maybe he gives back to the needy. Mother Teresa could be proposing these homes, and I would still expect the town to make her follow the laws. What's been brought here tonight shows that once again, Dan Ross has blatant disregard for the laws, blatant disregard for the Commission, and I can only hope that the town do the right thing and deny this project. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Johnson? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Deborah Chin.
Hello, I'm Deborah Chin, and I live at 154 Maggie Court, and that is directly downhill from the proposed development. Most of my comments are related to the letter of justification that was presented in December. In summary, Dan has stated that, quote, "The disappointing part of the process is that neighbors are left to fight over issues when neither side can claim they fully understand neighbors are left to fight over issues when neither side can claim they fully understand rules, guidelines, and nuances 100 percent." My feeling is that disappointing part of this is that there is a process, and there are rules and guidelines, and they do apply here. There is no nuance involved in the gross number and degree of variances that are associated with the plans as they currently stand. The other point that was made in the letter justification is that Maggie Court neighbors do not have absolute privacy now. I don't think that's our expectation, but I don't think the answer is to construct two huge homes that are 30 feet away from us with a direct line of sight into our bedrooms and eliminate all privacy. The third point is that, in the justification letter, he is asking for what is fair to the applicant based on what has been granted to nearby neighbors. I believe the fairness here should be applied to the community adherents to the Hillside standards and guidelines, which were passed to protect the environment after most of the homes were built on Bella Vista but before the applicant bought the lots. At the last planning hearing, there were people who spoke for over two hours, and they clearly outlined the numerous privacy, safety, traffic, and environmental issues associated with the project, and the developer was strongly advised to significantly reduce the size of the homes. I did the math, and both properties combined have only been reduced by a total of 5% square footage. I acknowledge that the applicant has a right to develop on the property, but it's clear that no one benefits from this project, except for Dan Ross, who is motivated by financial gain, and this is to the detriment of the community. So I also ask that the Planning Commission respectfully deny the application tonight. Thank you.
Questions for Ms. Chin? Thank you. The last speaker who have a card for her is Curtis Lee.
My name is Curtis Lee. I live at 148 Maggie Court, and I moved in in 2004, so I've been there almost eight years now, and I live directly below the proposed development. And I didn't want to go through all the variances and all the issues we've already been through tonight, but I did want to say that I am a developer on the commercial side in the Bay Area, and I deal with many planning commissions, many city councils, different towns, different cities, and I've never seen anything like this. I don't know why we're even entertaining all these variances. And I do know from a fact, all of our applications, when we get direction that we have to make significant changes, we go back and make significant changes. 5% of square footage is not a significant change. So I would just like to make sure that we're within the guidelines and everyone's doing their job, and that's all I'd like to ask. Thank you.
Question from Commissioner Smith.
I have a similar question for you as I had for another speaker, and that is, especially because you're an experienced developer and you understand development and asking questions. When you bought your property and you looked up the hillside, did you question what was going to be built there?
Yes, I did. And as you can imagine, being a developer, I did my research on the property behind us, and I was aware in 2004, around that timeframe when I bought, that an application had been denied, and for the reasons it should have been denied. And I looked into what could be built there, and obviously, I'm a developer myself, so I realized Mr. Ross should be able to build something there. So I have no problem with that, but it's within the range of 700, 800 square feet like it should be. I would have no problem with it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have no other speaker cards, assuming that no one else would like to speak on the topic. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Chair Erickson. Before you close the public testimony, I think that staff wants to clarify a few issues that came up during the public comment and then respond to the question by Commissioner Sayak.
Should we do that before or after the applicant rebuts?
Whatever the commission's preference. It's just that, in case the applicant wants to comment on any of that, we thought we'd at least offer that to the commission at this point.
Let's let you do it now, then.
Okay. Do you want to go ahead? Okay. So in response to Commissioner Sayak's question, thank you for giving us sufficient time to find the exact code sections. The Exhibit 13 submitted by Mr. Tillman is the Lot Line Adjustment Guides written by staff to give guidelines to the applicants, any applicant on any lot line adjustment. It relates back specifically to the town subdivision ordinance in 24.10.030 on boundary changes, and a boundary change can be a lot line, a subdivision of any type. And it is clear that the boundary change will not create any new lack of conformity or increase the degree of nonconformity with an ordinance or a statute. However, just like most codes are written, two sections down, there's a Code Section 2410.040 called modifications, that's completely discretionary for the reviewing body, that if it finds that the land included in this boundary change is of such size or shape, affected by such topographical locations or conditions, is devoted to such use that it's impossible or impractical in the particular use for the subdivision to conform fully to a regulation contained in this chapter, then it's at the reviewing body's discretion, based on findings similar to the findings that were in your packet for a variance, to consider the nonconforming and making it more nonconforming. Staff's not necessarily recommending it, but that's where this section comes from, is that it wasn't intended to be more nonconforming, but there is an exception that if you can make specific findings for that.
Ms. Bailey.
In terms of the allowable square footage in the FAR, for clarification purposes, staff wanted just to comment that using the R1 zoning requirements is more restrictive than using the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines. If we use the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, the applicant would be permitted to construct two 3,800 and square-foot homes up to, and there would be no exceptions to the FAR required. So therefore, using the R1 standards, it's a lot more restrictive in what the applicant can build, and there would be findings to exceed the FAR. Oh, and one more thing. Just to clarify, the town is not giving the applicant any property.
Thank you. Mr. Ross.
Well, the question comes to mind, where were these speakers when these townhomes were built? This land was zoned, single-family residence. It was changed to medium-density, attached housing, 35 feet tall, with six-foot separation between the buildings, narrower than standard roadways, no native trees that were, appear to have been left. And it's odd to me that they can stand here and get the benefit of what they get from the zone change that was done, the driveway variances that they've received, and the setback exceptions that they've been granted, and then state that I shouldn't, if I were to apply that logic to my parcel, I should be applying for attached townhomes, because that's what they got. In regards to privacy, you can stand on Bella Vista and look into the rooms right now. You can check it out for yourself. You can stand on Highway 9 and look into those buildings. There are trees in existence now that create shade that are between our homes and their homes, and those trees are going to remain. There are trees at the back of their townhomes that already create shade. We're east of them. The sun pattern, we're butted up under the oak canopy. The canopy and the existing trees that are there already are taller, for the most part, than what we're proposing to build, because the house has been pushed down below the canopy. The garage is the exception. The garage is farther away from the townhomes than the homes. Our slope, our engineers determined, if you take away the drop-off right at the top of the lot and a man-made cut that the HOA put in at the bottom of our lot, our average slope is in the 30s. We're asking for one variance, and we're not breaking laws, which tells me a lot of these speakers tonight still are confused about, you know, what the difference between law and provisions and codes. In closing, the plan you see tonight has had two reductions in size from our original plan. A home that the town, we modeled after 145 Bella Vista, which was approved by this commission in the town of Las Gadas. We've, you saw that our first reduction was significant. The, sorry, we've achieved, in October, we had a soft approval from the Planning Commission. We've been peer-reviewed and approved by the town's consulting architect and the other town's consultants, and approved, or we've received a supportive recommendation from the town's consultant and the other peer reviews that have been done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Questions for the applicant? Commissioner Talosfor.
Right. Just a clarification in what you just said, that you had a soft approval from the Planning Commission in October?
No, I'm sorry. What I meant for was from the Planning Department.
Department. Okay. Thank you.
So, you know, coming into that meeting in October, we felt we had done the work to achieve that goal, and...
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Commissioner Smith.
Mr. Ross, I may have asked you this last meeting, so just bear with me. When you bought the property, you were aware that the previous owner had been denied an application to develop the lot. Is that correct?
Yes, we studied those minutes.
Pardon me?
We studied those minutes.
And at that time, according to the record, there was one house proposed...
Yes.
...for both lots. Did you consider just building one house, but taking into consideration what was told to him about the house he wanted to build?
It was actually the opposite, is during the escrow period, staff thought that one house was a bad idea, because it would be, they preferred two homes that were more proportionate with the neighborhood, two smaller homes rather than one larger home.
So then we get to the FAR of 900 square feet or 800 square feet, but your home is substantially, your homes are substantially larger than that.
Which brings the question of the subterranean area below the main level. What do you do with that area? We don't think what we proposed is obnoxious. Everyone wants to make this sound like it's a monolith, and it's a 907-square-foot footprint and a 441-square-foot garage pad. The question is, what do you do with those areas below that? It can be dead space, or it could be used to create a livable, modern home. And we managed to do that, blocking the views to the townhomes below.
Well, I do hear what you say, but I recall very clearly in our last conversation with you that we asked you to substantially reduce the mass, and I recall that very clearly. So I just want to make that statement to you again.
No, and we're not ignoring that. You know, we talked to our architect, we talked to our engineer. You know, one point that was made is we could leave the lower level empty, and it would just be structural, the neighbors would look at structural support. They're going to still look at something.
Thank you. I'm complete.
And we would end up with a 907-square-foot house.
Other questions for Mr. Ross? If not, we'll close the public hearing. Any questions from the commission, further questions from the commission, for the staff? Commissioner Sayak.
If the staff could just walk me through plan, I have in front of me the plans, and the issue that I want to get to is height, just so that we are all on the same page on how we're calculating height for these homes. So I'm looking at A5, but if there are better plans, that's fine. And again, I'm looking at height, and I'm looking at the Hillside Development Standards and Guidelines, and there's four aspects to it. The first is that maximum allowed height for homes in Hillside shall be 25 feet. And so if Ms. Davis or Ms. Bailey could just walk me through all the different heights, and really, how do we calculate the height using the Hillside Development Standard Guidelines? Because there are several bullets. One is the 25 feet, and then the second is the maximum allowed height from the lowest part of the building to the highest, and I just want to make sure that I understand whether or not it's inconformity.
The 25-foot height requirement is a sectional height, so if anywhere you run a section, that cannot exceed 25 feet. The 35-foot height is from the low to the high points. When you have stepping elements, if you go from the lowest point to the absolute highest point, that differential can't be more than 35.
Okay.
Now, in the case of a cellar, or, you know, they, a piece of their house is a cellar because it's buried enough, that if you were measuring the height there, you'd be measuring it from the finished grade to the high point, so the exposed portion would be where you would be checking the height against. So that some of this dashed line you see on that first elevation, that's the buried portion.
Okay. And then the third issue, the fifth bullet point was three-story elevations are prohibited. And so because the garage, I'm also looking at the ridge lines, and so looking at the bottom elevation, the rear elevation, you're just calculating the two stories based on what is in the basement and then the 900-foot pad above that, and we're not looking at the change in roofline for the garage?
The three-story elevation, that's a subjective element. If you feel it's presenting three stories, that's a valid comment, and they could be asked not to do that.
Okay. And then my second question is, Mr. Ross had just stated about the structure that would be needed on the bottom of the 900-foot pad. What would, structurally, what would that look like? Would it still be filled in? Let's say we said that should be removed, and it's a 900-square-foot house. What would, what kind of support would need to go underneath? What would the residents below be seeing if it was just structural support?
I couldn't tell you without asking them to provide an elevation, exactly what it would look like. They're, you know, it'd have to be engineered, obviously, to be strong enough to hold up a house. If you, if you're looking at this exact design and you just take away the floor or underneath, then, you know, visually, you're still going to have the same height. It may be more open on the bottom versus a solid wall across, or solid walls. But I think the whole design would really need to be changed if you're going to, if you're going to try to build a 1,000-square-foot house or a 900-square-foot house, it needs to be redesigned, not built up on stilts.
Okay. And again, in our Hillside Development Standards, we do not encourage homes on stilts. Is that, isn't that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
At our last meeting, we asked for essentially a substantial reduction in the size and mass of the house, and now we're speculating, and I don't think we have to speculate. We asked for a substantial reduction in the house. We didn't get it. I'm not quarreling with the applicant. The applicant believes that he made substantial reductions early on involuntarily. The only problem is, we asked him to make additional, and I believe, in fact, he ignored that. Now, he ignored it in his own mind, I think, for good reasons. He said, "No, I can't do that," for whatever reason he did, but it doesn't change the fact that at the last hearing, after looking at all this, we said, "No, it is too big." Well, it hasn't gotten any smaller. I don't think we have to design his home now. I don't think we have to say, "Well, how many square feet ought he to have?" He has what he has. He's asking for a change in that. We asked for his help. Very frankly, he didn't give it to us. So to me, what he's asking, he's asking for, I think, four things. Architectural and site applications, he wants approval of the architectural site, he wants the lot line adjustment, he wants the variance application and a negative declaration. I guess I'm a bit confused, because my reaction is to say, "If you are unwilling to do what we asked you to do, then we ought to do what we would have done otherwise, i.e. deny." Secondly, we have a March 15 deadline. That's not a much time, and if he was unwilling to make a substantial reduction last time, I don't have any reason to believe that he's willing to make a substantial reduction this time. My position has not changed. I would not approve bulk and mass of this, for this property. I would not approve bulk and mass of this, for this property. If we, in fact, decide to deny the architectural and site application, I guess I'm going to need some help from the town attorney, because I don't know why the question of the lot line adjustment is ripe. First place, if we deny this, I assume it'll go to the town council, and they can deal with all this. But to me, the lot line adjustment is being asked for allegedly because staff made some suggestions to this gentleman, and acting on those suggestions, as he tells us, that's why he's doing the lot line adjustment, as opposed to combining the lots and building one massive house. Also, the variance application for the driveway, I don't know how we can approve that tonight if we deny the architectural and site application, because we don't know what the house is going to look like. We therefore don't know what the driveway is going to look like. So it seems to me the key question here is, are we going to approve architectural and site application? If we're not, there being no evidence that the applicant is willing to make any changes, then I would think we should deny it, which would mean that we would deny the other two matters. That leaves us only with a negative declaration. I am prepared to follow staff's recommendation on that. So that's one thing, I guess, we could do. But we discussed this last time. We stated the reasons why we were unhappy with the design. It has not substantially changed. It is massive when you look up at it. So the only reason I'm getting into this at all is when it goes to the town council, I think we probably have to do more than say, "We don't like it, and we're going to deny it." But I would simply, for the record, say, if you read both of these hearings, you will find lots of reasons why we asked for the substantial reduction. It is crystal clear that the applicant did not make those substantial reductions. That's why I questioned him. He told Commissioner Sayak essentially the same thing. He's unwilling to do that. Now, that may be for good judgment in his part. I'm not quarreling with him. I'm just saying, from our standpoint, from the design, it is -- it's just too massive. And the idea of livability, what does that mean? If you can just deal with these things and somebody's impression of livability, well, then you will always take your chances with the planning commission and the town council, because everybody's going to be dealing with a subjective issue. To me, you start with whatever the rules are. And then if there's a good reason to change them, you do. But when you get into touchy-feely livability, that's going to be pretty tough. And I don't see anything in this project which would make it uninhabitable, unsalable, to have a small home. Now, whether it's 900 square feet or 1,200 square feet, I don't know. That's why we asked him. And he said, "No, it's 2,400 square feet. Take it or leave it." And I'd like to leave it. So if anybody else says, "I'd like to..." I'd like to know where the commissioners are coming from.
Commissioner Talasfor.
I didn't even get that all the way out there. I was disappointed when I received this, because I thought we were pretty clear about our direction in October. You know, building too far is never a guarantee, and we look at other things with that. And that's siding. You have a very difficult lot. And then you have neighbor opposition, and then you have some -- you're asking for a variance and a lot line adjustment and to go over the FAR. So, you know, we take those things very seriously. Seriously. I can't understand your definition for livability. Livability, I've seen some -- I mean, we could have a conversation about it, and we're not going to, but I've seen some amazing designs of 1,000-square-feet homes that are modern and very attractive. But it's all in the eye of the beholder, and you don't feel that way. So, but, and I think that actually, the houses are very well-designed, just not for this lot, these lots. So with that in mind, and since the variance, for me, is tied to the design of the houses and the garage elements, and I haven't seen a sincere reduction in the request we had made for, you know, coming within what we would consider the floor area ratio for these lots, I cannot support this application at all. And one other thing, and this is the staff cited that seven of the 10 properties on Bella Vista had shorter 18-foot driveways. But the comparison, for me, doesn't justify any kind of granting of that variance because of the fact of the location of the driveways as they appear today. And it's on that blind curve. So for that, I won't support the application.
Comments from other commissioners?
Yes, thank you.
Commissioner Smith.
My concerns are the same as they were last time, and number one, it was the mass of the buildings, and I expressed that to you. And secondly, was the safety issue. And I am very concerned about that street period, and I'm very concerned about your design, where it is on the street. And a third consideration would be the fact that the neighbors are not in support of the type of project that you have proposed to us. So for that reason, I would not support your application.
Commissioner Sayak.
I'm prepared to make a motion, if that's okay.
Sure.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
On the negative declaration, since it isn't clear to me now that we'll know what the project is, I'm not quite sure how we can adopt a negative declaration when we don't know what the project is. I had thought originally while we could do --
No, we can't do that.
-- that it dawned on me, if we don't know what the project is, we probably cannot approve a negative declaration for a non-existent project.
Ms. Prop.
Thank you. Staff's recommendation is not to bifurcate any of the pieces and parts of this application, that they stand together, and we don't believe that you can make any of the findings for the different pieces and parts if you don't ultimately support the ark and site.
Thank you, Ms. Prop. Commissioner Sayak.
Okay. Before I begin, I do want to just -- this has been an ongoing process for you, and it sounds like there have been information that may have been misguided, information that may not have been clear. And for that, you know, that's quite unfortunate. But one of the things I do want to make clear to you, and well as to any applicant that is potentially applying for a project, is that is why we have these written guidelines, so that hopefully, you may, if you have unclear or ambiguous information, the information contained in our documents would spell out what exactly is requested of the applicant before you move on with the process. And, you know, this has been ongoing. We really can't go backwards to see what has been said and why, and what advice was been taken. And for that, that's quite unfortunate. But what I want to do tonight is, when I go through the different applications, is just point to the specific documents that are in front of us, so that at least it is clear to you why we're denying the application. Okay? The first one, let's move to, is negative declaration, ND 0802 and ND 0803. I move to disallow this application for the reasons stated, for not bifurcating. For lot line adjustment application, M-06-09, what I point to is, again, it is Exhibit 18 of today's staff report, and within Exhibit 18, there is Exhibit 13, which points to Town of Los Gatos Lot Line Adjustment Guide. The first bullet point under 9-1 processing, it's very clear, if lots are currently nonconforming as to size, they cannot become more nonconforming. We have heard from legal that if there are reasons and exceptions for changing it to a smaller lot size, then those can be met. But throughout this process, really, I haven't heard anything that warrants that to be granted. Variance application, F-11-001, that was with regards to the setbacks. And yes, you are correct, and that is the only variance that has been requested. And specifically, the one I'm most concerned about is the rear setback. The justification for that is, we heard several of the neighbors that live in the rear, and not meeting that setback would certainly cause more problems. And so there was no justification for that variance. So for that reason, I'll disallow that. And then with regards to architecture and site application, have to excuse me if I -- with the mint, I have a cold. I will deny that on the basis of the floor area ratio not being met, as well as bulk and mass. It was very clear in our previous discussion that we were hoping for significant reductions. Again, that was -- that's subject to interpretation, but considering that the floor area ratio is 753, and this is at 2,400, I think significant reduction of 5% was certainly not what we were looking for. So for those reasons, I make the motion for denial.
Before I entertain a second, may I ask a question of the staff? I believe the variance is for the driveway length, not for setbacks. Is that correct?
That is correct. What, for the rear setback, that would just be a deviation to modify the setback.
Okay, so if I could just clarify that the, okay, that the setback, those were deviations. And then with regard to the driveway variance, okay, so I'll also decline, deny that. And then the reasoning for that is just information that has been supported by what's contained in the record, as well as staff reports, and what has been testified with regard to traffic and safety, and nothing has been brought forward to substantiate that that was incorrect.
Thank you, Commissioner Sayak. Commissioner O'Donnell.
I want to second that, but I want to make a suggestion. Is the maker willing to also state that part of the reason for the denial of the variance for the driveway is we, since we're denying the house, there really isn't anything before us, factually, about a variance for the driveway, because the driveway leads to a house, which we've just disapproved? So could you add that to your reasons?
Yes, definitely. Thank you for that clarification.
I would second that.
This was introduced by Commissioner Sayak, seconded by Commissioner O'Donnell. Any further discussion by the commission? If not, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 The motion carries unanimously, 5-0. Ms. Bailey, are there appeal rights?
Yes, these decisions are appealable to the town council. Appeals must be filed within 10 days. There are fees for filing an appeal. Since there are two projects involved, a separate appeal will be required for each project, and appeal forms are located upstairs in the town clerk's office.
Thank you, Ms. Bailey. Any other issues that the commissioners would like to bring forth? Any other issues from the staff? If not, we're adjourned. If not, we're adjourned.